Ladies and gentlemen, I would ask you to please remain standing for the singing of "Oh Canada" and "God Save the Queen", led by the Mississauga Children's Choir.
(Singing) Oh Canada, our own authentic land, true ancient land, in all our sons come out. With glowing eyes we see the rose, a true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on our holy. God he our land, glorious and green. Oh Canada, we stand on our holy. Oh Canada, we stand on our holy. God save our gracious queen, our dear noble queen. God save the queen. Santa victorious, happy and glorious. All do reign over us. God save the queen.
Please be seated. And thank you to the Mississauga Children's Choir for that beautiful rendition of our national anthem and "God Save the Queen". Good evening, Mayor Crombie and members of our new council. For those who may not know me, I'm Janice Baker, the City Manager and Chief Administrative Officer of the City of Mississauga. And I'm pleased to welcome everyone to our inaugural meeting for the 2014 to 2018 Term of Council. And it's a pleasure to see so many people here tonight who've joined us. I would now like to welcome and introduce our new council: Mayor Bonnie Crombie; Ward 1 Councillor Jim Tovey; Ward 2 Councillor Karen Ras; Ward 3 Councillor Chris Von Seka; Ward 4 Councillor Frank Dale; Ward 5 Councillor Carolyn Parrish; Ward 6 Councillor Ron Starr; Ward 7 Councillor Nando Unika; Ward 8 Councillor Matt Mahoney; Ward 9 Councillor Pat Sado; Ward 10 Councillor Sue McFadden; and Ward 11 Councillor George Carlson. We also have a very special guest who's joined us this evening, and we'd like to acknowledge Hazel McCallion, former mayor of Mississauga. I'd also like to acknowledge any of our MPs and MPPs who've joined us here this evening. And I'd like to introduce the members of our leadership team who are here: Ed Sajeki, the Commissioner of Planning and Building; Gary Kent, Commissioner of Corporate Services; Martin Powell, Commissioner of Transportation and Works; and Paul Mitchum, Commissioner of Community Services. I want to say a special thank you to the talented performers who are here tonight, including the Mississauga Symphony Orchestra String Quartet who graciously played on our way in; the Mississauga Children's Choir, conducted by Dr. Karen Daly, who we heard from just a few moments ago; and to the Metalworks Production Group, who have put together an impressive lighting installation that will be a part of the reception following the inaugural meeting. Special thanks to Gil Moore and his team who worked closely with city staff to bring this project to life. And of course, thank you to all of you for being here this evening. I would now like to welcome Gary Su, elder of the Mississaugas of the New Credit First Nation, to do our invocation.
Mayor, councillors, the City of Mississauga, we send our greetings out to you that you recognize the First Nations people of this land, because you are all treaty people, just like me. The only thing is, you have to start to study the treaty that you fall underneath, and I already know them. So it's... With that, I'm going to... We call it calling in our ancestors, because it's a witness to what's taking place here, that our ancestors were once part of the things that would take place in the municipals and the governments. And so by inviting us here, you've reestablished that commitment that you have to the First Nations people. So in honor of that, I'm going to sing this song. It's called... It's a song before colonial times. Words are really simple. It's "Chi Mi Gwich", which our biggest thanks is given to the Creator. Nonde is "I need and want, but mother's heaven". And to us, it's... Every day you feed your body. So if you're well nourished, then your body is nourished and it has that balance. Every day we feed our minds with the things we hear and the things that we see. So right now, I'm going to feed your spirit so that you can go on and carry on the business that you have to do in the coming year that's coming up. (Singing) Chi Mi Gwichawe, nonde, but mother's heaven. 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 May you have a good life.
Thank you, Gary, for that beautiful invocation. Now it is time for our new council to take their declaration of office. So I am going to turn proceedings over to Crystal Greer, our Director of Legislative Services and City Clerk, to perform the declarations of office with the new mayor and members of council. Crystal.
Thank you, Janice. Good evening, Mayor Crombie, members of council and members of our leadership team. Before I invite Mayor Crombie to receive the mayor's chain of office, I would like to share a little bit of its background. The history behind the mayor's chain of office dates back over a thousand years. Starting with the Dukes of Normandy, civic leaders have been decorated with an official seal, originally worn on a gold chain around the neck. Today's chain of office is a modernized version of this seal. However, it remains rooted in history and tradition. The modern chain of office is composed of several elements joined together with a chain and sewn onto a velvet collar. Upon inauguration of a new mayor, the chain of office is presented and symbolically placed around the mayor's neck at the first meeting of city council. The mayor's chain of office is worn during council meetings, official openings and parades, and other events at the discretion of the mayor. The Mississauga Chain of Office pays homage to our city's past, present, and future. It features the crusts of the City of Mississauga's original three towns: the Town of Mississauga, the Town of Streetsville, and the Town of Port Credit. Our current civic coat of arms hangs from a medallion in the center of the chain. A second coat of arms is placed on the back so that it is visible from both sides. The collar is decorated with small trilliums representing the provincial government and small maple leaves representing the federal government. A special thank you to Biko, the creator of the chain. Biko is a modern nostalgic jeweler that draws inspiration from memories of the past. Their passion for creating pieces that tell a story fits nicely with the history behind the mayor's chain of office. I would like to specially thank Karine Anistopoulos, who is with us this evening. Karine, do you want to stand up? Karine crafted the chain of office by hand for us to present this evening. Mayor Crombie, I would now like to ask you to come forward for your declaration of office and the presentation of the chain.
I, Bonnie Crombie, having been elected to the office of the mayor in the municipality of the City of Mississauga, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II. And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously, believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath. I now ask the 11 councillors to stand to take your declaration of office together. Following the declaration, I will invite you to come forward individually to sign your declaration at the podium. So please repeat after me. Having been elected to the office of councillor... ...in the municipality of the City of Mississauga... ...I solemnly promise and declare that... ...I will truly, faithfully, and impartially... ...execute this office... ...to the best of my knowledge and ability... ...I have not and will not... ...receive any payment or reward... ...or promise thereof... ...for the exercise of this office... ...in a biased or corrupt... ...or in any other improper manner... ...I will disclose... ...any pecuniary interest... ...direct or indirect... ...in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act... ...I will be faithful... ...and bear true allegiance... ...to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II. And I make this solemn promise and declaration... ...conscientiously believing it to be true... ...and knowing that it is of the same force and effect... ...as if made under oath. Thank you. So I now invite Councillor Jim Tovey, Ward 1, to come to the podium. Ladies and gentlemen, please join with me in applauding our new council. Mayor Crombie, although this meeting is very ceremonial, there are several matters of business that must be addressed. Please join me at the podium so that we can conduct our business. So we have a motion to appoint members of council to the standing committees of council. Mayor Crombie, although this meeting is very ceremonial, there are several matters of business that must be addressed. Please join me at the podium so that we can conduct our business. So we have a motion to appoint members of council to the standing committees of council.
Moved by Karen Ross, seconded by Carolyn Parish. Whereas section 71-1 of the council procedural bylaw 0139-2013, as amended, identifies that the standing committee of council should comprise all members of council and subsection 74-1 requires the members to be appointed by resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that all members of council be appointed to the following standing committees for the term of council commencing December 1st, 2014 through November 30th, 2018, or until a successor is appointed. I, Budget Committee. I, I, General Committee. I, 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 Planning and Development Committee. IV, Transportation Committee.
Take the vote? All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved, carried. Moved by Carolyn Parish, seconded by Matthew Mahoney. That a bylaw be enacted to appoint an acting head of council on a rotating basis for the 2014 to 2018 term of office. Need to take a vote? All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. So now we need a mover for the enactment of the bylaw. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. So thank you, Mayor Crombie. That addresses the official council business that is required this evening. Thank you. My turn?
Well, good evening. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Salam aleikum. Sat rikal. Dobree viachur. Salaam. Masal alhiir. Buonasera. Buonanotte. Buona noite. Mangang danggabi. And wannacome. Thank you for joining us for this historic occasion. It is truly incredible to gather here tonight with so many people in our beautiful Living Arts Centre. I'm both honoured and humbled by the trust the voters of Mississauga have placed in me and in this council, and I fully appreciate the responsibility of this office. You have my commitment that I will work hard every day to build on what Hazel McCallion has started and chart a new course to move Mississauga forward. Friends, tonight we gather to usher in a new era and a new chapter in Mississauga's history, and I for one have never been more optimistic about our future than I am today. This year, we celebrate forty years as a city, a significant milestone and a critical time in our history, because the decisions we make today will be felt for generations to come. We have an opportunity to do great things and to chart a new course to move Mississauga forward, and it starts right here, right now, tonight. We are the new Mississauga, and it's our city, and it's our time. Together, we will write the next great chapter in our city's history. From this moment forward, every action we take and every decision we make must be with a mind to positioning our city to succeed for the next forty years and beyond. As your mayor, I will continue Hazel McCallion's tradition of strong fiscal management and be our city's greatest champion and Mississauga's most passionate and committed advocate. We are a dynamic, diverse, and emerging city. Mississauga is truly a city on the move. The job these last forty years was to build Mississauga from farmland and fruit trees into a great city. Well, mission accomplished. Our job for the next forty years will be to carve out a distinct identity and to take our place as a leader in the GTA and beyond. What the future of Mississauga will look like is up to each of us here tonight. We must work together to ensure Mississauga remains one of the best places in the world to live, to work, and to raise a family with a quality of life that is second to none. Now is the time for collaboration and unity. Mississaugans expect their government to deliver results. The residents of the city have put their trust in us to move Mississauga forward. We must always remember that we represent not just ourselves, but the over 750,000 people who call Mississauga home. May we always conduct ourselves with integrity and make decisions for the greater good of Mississauga and our residents. I look forward to working with this council to strengthen our city and move Mississauga forward, and while we move forward, we cannot ever forget our past. In fact, we must embrace our history and learn from it to forge a new path forward from our community centres, to our arenas, to our waterfront, and our downtown, to our public spaces, and of course, our unrivaled quality of life. Hazel McCallion's influence and legacy on Mississauga can be seen and felt everywhere. Over the past forty years, Hazel McCallion laid a strong foundation upon which we will continue to build an even greater city. We are in a position to seize upon some exciting opportunities, in large part because of her work and because of her vision to make Mississauga what it is today. For these and so many other reasons, we all owe Hazel McCallion a debt of gratitude. Thank you, Hazel. Each of you here tonight chose Mississauga as your home, just as my husband Brian and I have. The hundreds of thousands of other residents in this city chose to live here. Ask yourself, why did you do so? We chose to live here because of the high quality of life, yes, but also because of something more, the promise the city holds for all of its residents. Whether you've been here for twenty years or twenty days, each of us has an equal opportunity to reach higher and achieve success. Mississauga embodies the great Canadian success story. People from everywhere, every corner of the globe, and all points in between, living together in peace, prosperity, and harmony, celebrating each other's traditions. There are few other places in the world that can match Mississauga's vibrancy and diversity of culture, and there are a few cities, there are a few cities that can match our potential as a result as well. But like any forty-year-old city, Mississauga faces some significant challenges, including aging infrastructure, decreasing revenues, the need for increased local and regionally-integrated rapid transit, continued economic development, maintaining a competitive tax rate, attracting new investments, and creating jobs for all our residents. But at the same time, we're poised to seize upon some exciting opportunities. We have a highly skilled workforce, speaking over seventy different languages from over a hundred and fifty countries. We're home to sixty-three Fortune 500 companies and almost sixty thousand businesses, as well as the Toronto Pearson Airport. We have become a net importer of jobs. Yes, more people come to work in Mississauga daily than leave. We are strategically located within the GTA as a hub of economic activity, and our economy is strong with a GDP that now exceeds forty billion dollars annually. But to continue to succeed, we must first and foremost get the fundamentals right, and these include investing in transit and transportation networks to reduce congestion and gridlock, maintaining a thriving local economy by attracting investment, and by fostering a culture of innovation and entrepreneurship, by lifting people out of poverty and homelessness to ensure that all residents have a chance at success, and instilling a culture of greater openness and transparency at City Hall, developing livable, walkable, and healthy communities through intensification and urbanization, and maintaining strong civic leadership. These are the hallmarks of a world-class city, and our success will be measured by how we address each. We must first start by taking steps to relieve our gridlock and congestion through regionally-integrated transit. Every day, our roads become more crowded, resulting in lost productivity. Some estimate more than six billion dollars per year, but more importantly, less time with our family and friends. We have taken a significant step forward by opening the first phase of the Mississauga Bus Rapid Transitway, and I am confident that we will soon begin construction on the Huron Ontario Light Rail Transit, or the LRT, to build the north-south spine of a regionally-integrated rapid transit network. We have done our homework. We have a strong business case, and we are ready to get shovels in the ground on the LRT. At the same time, we will continue to advocate for all-day, two-way, go-train service that will enhance our connections to other cities in the GTA. To do this, we will work with our federal and our provincial representatives to find the necessary funding. It's about getting people moving to the places they want to go. And as we build our transit, we must do so in a way that encourages the development of livable, walkable, and healthy communities. It is important that we all be able to walk to a store to buy a litre of milk. Mississauga has grown out, but now it is, it is time. We quite literally grow up through intensified development, but only where it makes the most sense to do so. We must also maintain our focus on developing and protecting our waterfront and making it accessible to all, all residents, along with building a downtown that is vibrant, walkable, and a destination for all. And when we say we're going downtown, it should mean downtown Mississauga. A vibrant city is built on a strong economic base, where local residents can live and work in their own community, where domestic and international businesses are supported, and where innovators and entrepreneurs have the freedom and the support needed to thrive and succeed. Our economic development strategy must be focused on attracting, retaining, and encouraging business on all levels. It also requires a champion. As your mayor, I will lead our economic development efforts and champion our city at every opportunity. It is critical that we seize upon every investment opportunity, position ourselves to compete effectively in the global marketplace, and create employment opportunities for all residents. As such, one of my first actions as mayor will be to work with our local business and trade organizations, as well as our many cultural associations, to create an international investment advisory panel, which will be supported directly by the mayor's office and our city's economic development office. While looking abroad to attract investment, we must always ensure that the needs of our local businesses are met. I believe we can, we can and we must do more to meet the needs of our almost sixty thousand businesses. To compete globally, we must also be at the forefront of the knowledge economy and become a hub for new ideas and new business. Mississauga can become this hub of innovation and entrepreneurship if we put in place the necessary supports and bring together the leaders in these sectors. Our innovators should not have to look outside our borders for support, but should be able to take their ideas from concept to commercialization right here in their own backyard. We have many of the building blocks already in place here, UTM's Innovation Complex, Sheridan College, the RIC Centre, Advantage Mississauga, and the Mississauga Board of Trade. What I believe is needed at this point is greater collaboration of the, of the efforts of these organizations. To do this, I will create a mayor's task force on innovation and entrepreneurship to bring together the right people to move this agenda forward. Mississauga will be an innovation city, competing on the national and international stage for the best and the brightest talent and ideas. Thank you. While we strive to be a global leader, we cannot afford to leave anyone behind. This includes the over sixty thousand residents that use one of our many food banks every month, the twenty percent of the children who go hungry every day, and those who are homeless or cannot find safe or affordable housing. This is unacceptable and will be addressed through a mayor's task force on poverty and homelessness that will bring together the leading voices in this area to find real and practical Mississauga-based solutions to these issues. I'm also troubled by the youth unemployment rate that now stands at close to twenty percent in Peel Region. We are at risk at losing a generation of youth. As mayor, I'll issue the Mayor's Youth Job Challenge to encourage local businesses to hire and mentor local youth, as well as engage in discussions to change our city's procurement policy, to ensure that we are encouraging vendors to hire our youth. We must do all we can to address these issues, which include ensuring that Mississauga and Peel Region receives its fair share of funding for health and for social services. No one can be left behind, or we will all be left behind. Part of the solution also includes fostering a climate of inclusiveness through open and accessible government, where all citizens have a voice and can have an impact on decision-making. So with the support of council, I will move to strike a diversity and inclusion advisory committee that will be made up of councillors and residents and will engage in research, hear deputations, and review policies to ensure our government is responsive to all our residents. This committee will report directly to council and will have a clear mandate and a strong voice. As your mayor, I will host office hours in conjunction with the local ward councillor once a month in each ward to make myself available to residents. As a councillor, I held regular office hours in my ward each week and was pleased by the number of residents who came in to discuss their ideas, concerns, and their thoughts about the future of their city and of their community. From Clarkson to Cooksville, from Streetsville to Port Credit, to Malton and throughout Mississauga, I will work with councillors to be responsive to the needs of our residents and our neighborhoods. I'm equally committed to improving transparency at City Hall. Residents deserve to know what their government is doing, how decisions are made, and how their hard-earned money is spent. I will work with our city staff to create an open government portal that will not only share data, but will do so in such a way that is understandable and usable. This includes the city budget, which can at times be complex. Fittingly, the first job of our new council will be to deliver the twenty-four years Fittingly, the first job of our new council will be to deliver the 2015 budget. I know council is determined to create a strong budget that ensures good value for taxpayers' money while keeping taxes at the rate of inflation. Mississauga enjoys a AAA credit rating and has been named one of the best-run cities in North America for 25 straight years. This is no accident. It is the product of prudent financial management, strong stewardship, and strong leadership. As mayor, I will ensure this continues, and while we cannot cut our way to prosperity, we can and we must make improvements in how we do business and provide services. I am committed to finding savings and improving efficiencies, and I will start discussion at council about undertaking an independent review of our programs, our services, and our operations. I will also seek to make the best use of emerging technologies to streamline processes and improve service delivery. We live in an online world, and your government should be accessible to every resident with an internet connection. Investing in transit, fostering a strong economic environment, addressing poverty and homelessness, opening City Hall to all residents, developing a more livable, walkable community, and maintaining strong leadership at City Hall, these are my priorities, and it will take hard work, collaboration, and engagement to realize that these, to realize these goals and shape our future, shape our future identity, and build a great community. I for one am looking forward to rolling up my sleeves, getting to work to achieve results. Mississauga has changed greatly over the past 40 years, but we've never lost, nor will we ever stray from our core values, those of hard work, determination, strong ethics, and respect for our neighbors and for our taxpayers. I think that was Hazel. Mississauga's success will not be achieved in isolation, but by all, all of us working together. As mayor, I ask that you make your voices heard. I want you to join me, to be part of this great debate about the future of our city, strive to make your neighborhoods better places to live through collective action and commitment to our community. Mississauga has all the assets needed to continue to prosper. I'm confident that if we work together, we will achieve greatness and carve out our identity as a world-class city and as a global destination for prosperity. Mississauga has limitless potential, and I stand before you tonight to say our future is bright. I believe that our best days are ahead of us. Success cannot be left to chance. We must seize the moment before us and take action today. Together, we will build a great city. So let's get to work. Thank you. Just a little bit of housekeeping now. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight to mark this special meeting of council. I'd like to thank our performers, the wonderful Mississauga Symphony Orchestra String Quartet, the Mississauga Children's Choir, conducted by Dr. Karen Daly. I'd also like to thank Elder Gary Su of the Mississaugas of the New Credit First Nation for his Aboriginal blessing. I'd like to thank the Mississauga Fire and Emergency Services for leading tonight's procession, and the Knights of Columbus for joining us as our honor guard. I'd like to thank the faith leaders who have joined us here tonight, Father Mark Andre Campbell, Imam Hamid Slimi, and Daljit Sekan, and Pandit Rupla Sharma. I'd also like to thank my family, who is sitting here in the front row here for me tonight, my husband Brian Crombie, my children Alexander, Jonathan, and Natasha, and my mother Veronica Saworna. Without their love and support, I would not be standing on this stage tonight. All right, I invite you to join us in the atrium for a reception that features the installation, an installation created by Metalworks Production Group in partnership with, with the City of Mississauga's Culture Division. Metalworks has undertaken the theme of "Looking at Our City with Nuance" and created a lighting and video installation reflective of our great city. Thank you Gil and Sunny Moore and the Metalworks team for being the creative designer and technical support for our inaugural council. Special thanks to all the wonderful youth volunteers from the Mississauga Youth Advisory Council who helped make tonight's meeting a terrific success, and to the city's staff from the corporate, from Corporate Communication, Clerks, Recreation and Culture for contributing your support, your talent, and your time. And now I would like to ask council to pass the confirmatory bylaw that confirms all the actions taken place at this, our inaugural council meeting for the 2014-2018 term. Can we have a motion? Thank you. So moved and all in favor, all opposed? Thank you. And now I need a motion of adjournment. So moved, all in favor, any opposed? So we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Have a wonderful evening.